Oh, rather than to make a motion, you just say, you know, it has moved.
Right. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Broack Select Board meeting of Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. Call this meeting to order. All select board members are present with the exception of Chair Noah Cobb. Is he online? Can you see that?
No, he's not.
Don't see him.
Noah is absent at the moment. He may join us later. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's begin with the approval of the meeting minutes dated August 1st, 2023. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yep, I have. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes. Okay, we're going to take things a little bit out of order this evening, and we're going to move down to new business. And going to have the tax commitment.
Afterwards.
Afterwards? If you want to step over, please, thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Paul McKenney. Work for Municipal Resources. I'm one of the assessors for the town, contract assessors. So the memo that I've presented shows the prior year comparison spreadsheet that you can see that the town's total taxable real estate valuation base increased by $13,145,250, which is about a 1.8% increase over last year's. The increase due primarily to continued new residential and commercial construction. Personal property decreased by $1,618,845, 23.35% decrease. In the bedding exemption, our reimbursement increased by $1,053,390, which is a 59% increase from 2022 to '13 tax year. And this is due to, because we certified at a lower ratio this year, we had to reduce those values along with the standard depreciation, so it brought all those personal property values down. When we do the reevaluation next year, that'll all come back up to 100%, and we'll recapture most of that value. Spreadsheet shows that the county's tax appropriations increased by roughly 6.4%. Municipal appropriations and school education appropriations increased by 1.7% and 4.2% respectively. The TIF amount of $66,960 is a significant increase over last year's $28,440, an increase of $28,411, which is an increase of 73.8% over last year due to the growth of the former prime tanning site. State revenue sharing remained the same at 1.4 million. On the spreadsheets following the municipal tax rate calculation, I have attached a spreadsheet showing the potential range of overlay amounts depending on the tax rate selected. The minimum tax rate that could be selected is $18.28, while the maximum rate is $19.18. For every penny changed in the tax rate, the overlay changes by $7,925. In consideration of the noted changes in valuation appropriations and revenues, it is us suggestion that a tax rate of $18.32 with an overlay of $35,000 be selected. This is an increase from last year's rate of $18.22. So I'm looking for a vote or answer any questions to, you know, decide which tax rate you'd like. The three that I've got is $18.30, which is an overlay of $21,534, $18.32, which is what I'm recommending for $37,386, and $18.34 would be $53,239. One thing I just want. So for taxes on a $350,000 assessment, last year was $6,377. This year would be $6,412, which would be a $35 difference on a $350,000 house for a 0.55% of an increase.
I'll get Paul rolling. I'll make a motion that we set a tax rate of $18.32.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend the 18.32 tax rate. All those in favor?
I'd like to have a little further discussion first.
I apologize.
Well, you're talking about the personal property tax that decreased by $1.6 million. You said you expect that to be brought back up when we do the reassessment?
Yeah, a lot of those, because we had to reduce the ratio to 85% from 90% last year, it brought a lot of properties below the $10,000 minimum. So therefore, they're not taxable at all. So that's, you know, that's where the biggest part of it come. But next year, when we do the reevaluation, everything will be back up to 100%, so therefore those will come back, you know, we'll get those accounts back and whatever, you know, whatever new accounts we have. I'm sure that the project across the street will also generate more, you know, more personal property business as well.
So is after, after, you know, we do our reevaluation, is the revaluation, how long do you expect that to take? Just the one year or?
Yeah, it'll go into effect for the April 1st, 2024 values. So I'll start it as soon as we get done here.
Yeah, we got the paperwork in the mail yesterday.
Yeah, we'll probably start in September, October. You know, once everything gets finalized and we'll start, we'll start looking. We've already started looking at sales and stuff, but, you know, we'll get into the full swing of things this fall.
Thank you.
Any of the others have a comment? Nope. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Thank you for taking me here. I've had a long week so far.
You're welcome. Okay, so I would like to go back then to public comment. Anybody for public comment?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public comment. We have no public hearing. Report to committees.
Hello, a couple of things. The first is that the BCM committee chose the BCM sign that you see on the front of this page right here. Basically, it would go on the front side of the building, just under the red light. And what we're looking, it's just small, but it will point out BCM as being around the corner. We had talked about having a section that said Burgess Meeting Room. The cost went up considerably for that, so we decided not to do that piece. If you would like that piece and the town is willing to pay for it, I'd be happy to add it on, but just for the BCM sign, I figured we'd go with the smaller one. And then the second thing is we're doing a summer fun video contest. One of the things I've seen is on Facebook is people have been saying, you know, what do you do? We just moved to the area. What do you do for fun with your kids? Or where do you go that would be fun for a family or something like that? And so I thought, what better way than doing a video contest? And so we're doing a 30 to 60 second summer fun activity, and it can be anywhere in New England, so it doesn't have to be in Berwick. It can, you know, when you limit it to Berwick, you're going to get the same videos over and over again. So I thought, doing New England, at least it's within driving distance, so people could go if they wanted to. And we're going to culminate on Community Media Day, October 20th. So videos would be due by October 10th, and we'd go through, pick out the winners, and we're going to do three categories. So there'll be a younger age, and we're looking at like eight to 14, and then 15 to 20 and 21 and over. And there will be prizes for each category, so, you know, I've already gotten donations from Enzo Benzo Donuts, fun time, and Bad Wolf Butcher has offered some, Jay Everly Salon has looked at it, and I'm asking other places to donate as well. Once I have all of that, I'll get some posters made up. We'll put them in all of the locations we can think of, and we're also going to make up a public service announcement to advertise it and get it out there. And then what we'd like to do is culminate, if we can, organize somewhere around the October 20th, a film night where we show all of the videos, not just the winners, but everybody's video, which would be kind of fun. So wanted to make you aware of that. Any questions?
Are you going to also, since the deadline is October 10th, are you also going to send this out with the students at the schools?
That's what I'm hoping, yes. That actually, I talked with one of the committees this last week about how we could get information through to the schools, because they don't always have poster places to put inside, so I'm looking at how we might be able to do that.
That'd be great.
Anything else?
Anybody have any questions?
I think it's a lot of fun.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, Noah.
Yes, make Noah note that Chair Noah Cobb has shown us via Zoom.
Yeah, we know you're just sitting over on Worcester Road.
Well, we're glad you could join us. Okay, moving to department reports. Do we have any department reports? No, okay. Appointments, presentations, other guests? I see no other guests in the audience. Okay. Unfinished business, the amendments to the land use ordinance, subdivision regulations, village overlay district and design guidelines.
This is on the agenda, just to go over the changes since last meeting. We had a few minor changes based off of board and attorney feedback. These have been reviewed by our land use attorney, and they have the green light to go forward on the ballot. Now just go over some of the minor changes. On the land use ordinance amendments under automotive convenience store and gas station, making a distinction and adding "or" to distinguish from even charging stations. That's it for gas station changes. The other, there's two more changes, another one on Section 6 under lighting. After speaking with Phil, our attorney, just made sense to remove, we had an exemption in there from the regulations for temporary lighting. I know what the intent was, it just could set us up for issues down the line. You know, if there's something that glares onto a street and it's temporary, they can say it's temporary, just eliminates that potential for a conflict down the road.
I, it's not defining what temporary is.
Yeah, it just, I mean, even if it's a, you know, if it's, otherwise it would be illegal light, but it's temporary, why would we allow it? The last change is it's threading the design guidelines and standards ordinance into the land use ordinance. So by creating a performance standards, so every conditional use in site plan through planning board has to meet A through S, has to meet, has to be a yes on each one, otherwise it doesn't get accepted. This adds a "T", which says that design guidelines and standards, applications for new buildings and structures within the village overlay district and along major corridors of 4th, 236 and 9 must conform to design guides and standards ordinance.
We are taking a vote tonight just to place this on the November ballot, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So that would be under the new business, that would be taking those votes? Or we need to, need to vote on the changes to the amendments first?
Right, and then you'll make your recommendations.
Make the recommendations later.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the amendments as proposed by the town manager per legal guidelines.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the amendments recommended by our legal attorneys? Any discussion?
Yeah, James, just for clarity for people looking on, so number seven, so we talk about adding the "T". We're talking about the, that would actually follow the design guides and standards that were also going to be put under too, right?
Right. It would make it so the applicant, the applicant would have to show evidence that they have conformed to the design guide and standards.
Perfect.
Any other discussion about the amendments?
Under G, James, it's saying, you know, the meeting department environmental, G and M both seem like they're state and or federal regulations. Do those need to be on there?
From an efficiency? Damn.
It seems like there'd be a lot more if we included all of them. There's probably a lot more.
It is, it is leading more on the side of redundancy. It doesn't, I don't think it hurts to have it in there, because you could, you know, for anything like that, you could throw, we have some examples of that where it has to meet state standards, but obviously they have to meet the state standards anyways.
Right. I, I don't see a problem with leaving it in there. No, they, they have to anyways, and this is just, you know, putting it out there in our regulations, telling the developers that, you know, they will have to meet them. That's all it's saying.
Yeah, and, you know, probably a lot of others too that aren't there.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for, just for the amendments to be added. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor? All, all those opposed? Noah is an "I", and that is five to zero. All right, town manager report.
We have a contractor to move the irrigation where the playground is going to be at Memorial Field. The site work will begin soon. We're just working on invoices and insurance, and once it begins, it'll be two or three days. So once that's done, we'll be able to schedule installation of the playground.
Nice.
And make the residents happy.
Yeah.
A long, long time coming. So we recently found out our video security system is a security risk. We're going to need to replace our video system. We initially reached out, we had a safety meeting about a month and a half, month or two ago, with police to go over some best practices. Patty and I met with Two Way to go over locations, so you'll see a proposal. So while we are needing to replace the system, we'll have an opportunity to improve and have more coverage in important areas in and around town hall. Jody and I met with Knolls Industrial out of Gorham. We reviewed some areas that need addressing for water infiltration. Greg from Knolls pointed out how the windows need to be caulked, seemed like pretty low hanging fruit, and just explained how water can get in, just because it's not caulked properly. Also that some bricks need to be repointed. He also pointed out that our, our front steps need to be entirely replaced. They are in good enough condition that we can maintain them over the next five or so years, but for our capital plans, we should be saving some funds to plan on completely replacing it. And it might be an opportunity to put in a ADA ramp or something while we're at it.
Yeah, James and I were talking with Jody a week or so ago, and Jody said that when they were doing some inspections on the, the front steps, is everything we see is just a shell over, just dirt underneath. There's no real foundation, and everything's starting to fall back in, so, you know, to do it properly, we'll need to take everything out and redo it all, so. And if we got to redo it as it looks now or something close, it's going to be expensive, a lot of brickwork, so it's something we need to look forward to.
Right, they're, they're are in okay enough shape to, we could do a short term fix to get us through for five years, then save over the five years, and just, that might be a good five year plan. Last thing I have is lawn chairs. Bring your lawn chairs to Sullivan Square this Saturday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Portions of Sullivan Street and Rochester Street will be closed. There'll be bands, food, variety of local performers, performers from the region, and activities for all ages. I'll see you there. That completes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, select board communications. I have one. We received an invitation from NASA on Health to tour their facility up there in the Sanford-Springville area, and I took the opportunity to go. It was, it was pretty interesting to see how they have collectively put most of the services that are needed in one location, to sort of cut down on, oh, you have to go here for this and here for that. They've got mental health, primary care, dental, everything, all in one building, and you don't have to have insurance. They have, they have some that use the primary care with insurance, because they know they can get everything done there, and then they have sliding scale for those that don't have insurance. But it was just amazing to see how many services they provide in one location, and they also have an incredible network of people, so if you need a specialist, they have connections that even with their sliding space, pay scale, they can make those appointments happen. So I enjoyed the visit and appreciated them, you know, inviting us in from the open house. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? No, okay. Okay, so we already did the, that, so we're going to go to approval of accounts payable and payroll warrants. So the first one is dated 8/17/2023, payroll warrant number 10 for $91,171.75. The second one is dated 8/3/2023, payroll warrant number 8 in the amount of $92,748.20. Next one is dated August 10th, 2023, payroll warrant number 9, amount of $96,325. And, and August 15th, 2023, accounts payable warrant number 11 in the amount of $1,039,834.11. Hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we pay our bills, a second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pay our bills. Any discussions? All those approve? Five to me, thank you very much. All right, do we have, next up is the transfer fees, transfer station fees?
This is just to recover some costs. We have, it's a pretty large expense. A full load approaches $10,000 to remove the yard brush. Initially proposed $5 a bag or $5 a yard. Mike emailed me, I think, with some good points that, I guess, for the typical residential user, that probably should be included in the transfer station budget, so to have some way of factoring that in the fee, whether it's the first three bags are free, or first three yard, three yards are free, and offer that, there's some, some sort of fee. I use the Sanford, the Sanford Transfer Station, they have a conversion rate I thought was pretty interesting. Just for your information, a small pickup load is about a yard and a half. So if we wanted to do, whether it's the first two or three yards or contractor bags free, then anything after that, $5 per bag or yard? Is there any?
Sounds like it's getting complicated.
I was going to say, did you get any feedback just from down?
Yeah, how about why are we doing it to begin with?
Costs money to haul it off.
Of course, yeah.
Do we have anyone else that brings trash in, like other towns or people, businesses?
It's mostly, it'd be mostly just like, we're, some of the issues historically with the transfer station is we are subsidizing businesses and contractors by them coming in and dumping off larger than the average user, and they should pay for anything that's above and beyond what they're on.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Are they getting charged extra?
Right now, there's no, there's, there's nothing in our fee schedule for yard waste.
So how would you track if somebody, are you saying each visit, they would get like one free or two free, or would you have some way of tracking that? Because that, to me, that's what makes it sound complicated.
I'll, I'll bring up what I brought to James, just so, and the only thing I could think of was, there are some residents, when we're talking about bags, because I think the point of it here is, when you have those full trucks or contractors are coming, that's what we're trying to offset, because that's where there's brushers, shrewders, everything else. I'm thinking of, some of the people I use that are the residents that are, I have some senior residents in my neighborhood that might fill three quarters of a bag and take it a week. Now you're going to charge them $5 this week, it's three quarters of a bag next week, and I was like, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but it's, that's something that they're already paying for, you know, really, that's kind of.
Right, that's what I'm wondering how to track it.
I mean, I was just thinking it was a large load. I mean, I was thinking, and I just told James, if we want to talk to see what the transfer stations, if it's something that's a large load coming in, like, I mean, if I'm unloading a whole bunch of brush, yeah, I understand, I'm paying, because I'm purging stuff down. But Sally down the street bringing a bag.
Right, you got a landscaping truck and you're dumping off a bunch of.
You shouldn't pay. Yeah.
Well, but are they already charged? The landscaping company that drops off, that, like, we don't bring our trash, somebody comes and picks it up. Are they bringing it there? Are they getting an increase?
No.
No, not right now.
Shouldn't they be the ones that get an increase? The people that bring it in, that are charging us already?
Those would be specifically just for yard waste.
Oh, not for regular trash?
Nothing else.
Ah.
This is just, this is just the brush.
And, you know, getting on Mike's topic there is, is, you know, and one of the reasons we had to change things for the demolition waste is that people were saying, oh, I don't have a pickup truck, I have four bags. That's why we went to buy bag there. And for the yard waste, you know, you're talking about mostly leaves and grass clippings. You know, maybe four bags free, and after that, you have to pay per load? I don't know. You know, that's it, it's hard to.
Yeah, I don't have a number to quantify. I just asked James, I go, see what they want. I go.
If you come in, you come in with a truckload of brush, it's pretty obvious, you got a truckload of brush. Is, well, you know, but, you know, if we do, if we say, oh, if you come in with bags, we don't need to charge, is we'll get those people with.
They're packing everything, yes.
Yeah, they'll, they will get 10 bags, so.
I can go back to that.
Yeah, I think, I think there's something we need to think about a little bit.
Yeah, my, my, because at first I was like, oh, yeah, that sounds great. I know what it's, we're doing, and then also I'm thinking about, I'm like, well, if you get somebody who's, this is all they can do, a little part of their yard, and now we're charging $5 every weekend when they're going down there, you're charging a resident $60 over the fall.
But I agree, they had to do something.
But I do think we should do something to, yes.
Unless you have like a free week of spring cleanup and a free fall cleanup, like a whole week, anybody could bring it.
We used to do that.
You still got the contractors.
Well, no, it wasn't that, it wasn't that, is that, is. It wasn't that, is that, is it was so successful.
Oh, no.
That we didn't have, we didn't have enough room at the transfer station for all the dumpsters we needed.
Gotcha.
Because everybody would wait all year long, and then, yeah, we needed 15 or 20 dumpsters all of a sudden.
Have you been, have you been down there to see what it looks like? Because you said you have people.
Right, but for the actual leaves and things, we do go down. And it's just, I think they just push it back. I don't know what they do.
They do, but when it fills up, it gets hauled off.
Yeah.
Because it gets too big to let me pay every time that gets hauled off.
Hazard if you leave it there.
Yeah.
And you said, what, $10,000 a year right now?
It's getting up there.
Yeah, it's more than $10,000, like a full haul.
Oh, full haul. Oh, so it's more than $10,000. So, yeah, it is something that we need to look at, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely.
How big of a truck is a full haul?
That's it.
Well, if, 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 probably, probably, is a do set that comes and takes it. So a log and truck, basically, is would be with all the brush and everything, I would assume is what it would be. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's something we. Right.
I mean, two, two bags and not half a truckload, but four bags is.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, they can come back with like something like that so that the, you know, the resident that only has a bag or a bag and a half is going to get.
And we're going to make, going to make it convenient for the guys at the transfer station, too.
Yeah, I don't want it over complicated where they have to be like out there.
You know, with, with cash flowing back and forth all the time, and on a Saturday and Sunday, it gets pretty confusing. We know that.
It gets busy. The other thing I want to note, too, is on this proposed one, you're only giving like two weeks' notice. Is there any reason why we can't give people 30 days' notice if we're going to make a change?
Oh, absolutely not. No, it could be, it could be October.
Yeah, I just think that because people have to dump every, every week and sometimes not every other week. So if you say a month, that, someone's going to know that. So everybody would be notified, have something there, have it marked, have PCM cover it. And, you know, not that people won't still complain, but you can at least say, we gave them 30 days' notice of the change. We didn't, oh, you just slid it in.
So this here isn't for regular trash.
So we're going to, we're not going to vote on this, we're going to send it back to them?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Okay. So the next is the November 7th, 2023 Town Referendum, Select Board Recommendations of the Warrant Articles. Okay, so we need to vote on each individual article? Okay.
The ones with the yes and no votes.
Not Article 1.
Right, starting with Article 2. Correct. Okay. Okay, so I will read it. Article 2, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt the Amendments to Land Use Ordinance? Exhibits A are attached here in 2.
No motions or anything, you just ask for the vote.
Just motion. Okay, so how many yes votes? Noah, okay. Article 3, Shall the Town?
Can you ask for no votes?
No votes. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 3, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt the Amendments to Land Use Ordinance Regarding Marijuana? Are there any yea votes?
Aye.
Okay, any no votes? Okay. Article 4, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt the Proposed Design Guide and Standards Ordinance? Are there any yea votes? Okay, are there any no votes? Okay. Article 5, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt the Proposed Amendments to the Village Overlay District? Are there any yea votes? Any no votes? Shall the Town Vote to Adopt the Proposed Amendments to the Subdivision Ordinance? Are there any yea votes? Are there any no votes?
I can just sidebar here for this one. I have a little.
I will abstain from Article 7 as well.
Yep. I have a little information on this one. I've been talking with our attorney. So this, our, this provision has a lot of gray areas in it. It's something that Tom brought up a little bit last meeting. I just want to go over it quickly because the board does have a couple of options. One of them is not even including it on the warrant at all. If you, I think that's the first vote you guys should take, is whether the article should even be on the ballot and then do the recommendation. Now, just go over some information quickly. So at SNPDC, they're split on what they believe what active means. And that's what this hinges on, if it's even able to be petitioned to be accepted by the town. Lee J thinks active means that there's an open lot in the subdivision. Hannah believes that that alone is not considering it active, is that it's literally, they're act, they were actively constructing in 2019 when we adopted the, to no longer take over dead ends. And speaking with Phil, he said that there is some weight in the fact that the road was not completed up until a few weeks ago. We held a construction escrow, and in that sense that it could still be considered active. In the June 2024 ordinance amendments, it's recommended that we eliminate the exemption at all, we just go straight to we are no longer taking over dead end roads, period. So, with that said, it's gray enough that it would be perfectly acceptable to go in either, in either direction, to either include it on the ballot or not, but then if it is, obviously, if it was included, then take the recommendation. Does that sound?
It gets complicated, I know.
Yes.
There's, there's, there's a, there's a few that are, they're out there. It's not, it's not a huge number of roads. And, yeah, in the next available election, we'll fix that and make it much more clear.
I'm the one, one that really pushed to stop the town taking over dead end roads. We can't, we can't take care of the roads we already have. I think it's foolish for us to just keep accepting new roads and assuming that, no, sometime in the future, we're going to have that money to fix it. Is, I made the argument back then, and I'll make it again, that if it's a through road connecting between two existing roads, to me, that's one thing, because then it can be used as an emergency way. If the road is, one end is closed or something, then you can do it. But with the dead ends, the cul-de-sacs and things like that, is the only purpose for that road is to serve the people on that road. It's not to serve the town at all. And, you know, I have, like I said, I pushed for that, and we had it, and this road was brought in and started back into the old rules, and I realize that. But, you know, whether we accept to put it on the ballot or not, is I'll say right now, I'm going to vote no that we recommend the residents vote for it, so.
But what you just said is, when this came up, it did follow the existing rules at the time.
It started, but is by not completing it until this year. How many years has it been in existence? That's been a long, though.
Probably closer to 10?
No, it's more than 10. It's probably closer to 20 years, isn't it? Yeah, you know, is, and is the one active lot, they have purposely left one lot there, not built on. And all these years, it could have been built on, and they didn't. And when we were looking at property for the fire station, we were looking at a piece further up Pine Hill Road, and it abuts that property all the way down there. And we were told at the time that that lot could be used as the continuation road, no, through there. So my feeling is they never planned on putting a house in there. They planned on, you know, using that as a right of way. But I can't prove that, because that's just my feeling.
Okay, so I'm just, we harp a lot on following the rules as they're written. And so that's why I'm asking, when the road was originally constructed, it fell under the regulations that existed at the time. We've since changed those, but is this grandfathered in? And I use that word very loosely because, like you said, it took 10 years, but did it meet all of the requirements of the town at the time that they built it?
It's built to, it's built to town standard.
It's built to the town standards now, but, you know, it's like, like I said, I'll, you know, put it on, put it on, put it on the ballot, is, you know, if that's the board's will.
I think we've closed the loophole and, and, yeah. Nope, okay.
Can you vote to put it on the ballot?
That's what I'm going to do now, before I do that. Is there anybody? Want to comment before I read the article? No. Okay, Article 7, Shall the Town Vote to Accept Chandler's Way as a Public Right-of-Way as requested by residents? Do I have any yea votes?
So is, is this just to put it on the ballot? So is.
Noah? Oh, okay. Do we have any no votes? Nay votes?
So you don't want to put it on the ballot?
Correct, that's what we're voting for, correct?
Okay.
Right.
So it's, there's a motion to not put it on the ballot? Can someone make that motion?
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, I'm reading this article as this is going on the ballot and what is our recommendation?
Okay, so it was zero yes, four no's, and one abstention?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's, sorry if I said that wrong.
That's okay.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So next up, do we have any quitclaim deeds or installment contracts? No, okay. Abatement, supplements? Second public comment? Anyone from the public? Okay. Do we have an executive session?
No.
No. Okay. Other business, non-agenda item? We do have one. What did I do with it? Hold on one second, bear with me.
It's in the folder.
It's the M L A.
It is in your folder under number 19.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I thought it was separate.
It is, but.
Thank you. Okay, so the main municipal association has their annual voting to put people on election of president and executive committee members. The first one is for vice president, which is a one-year term. There is one person nominated, Melissa Doan, town manager of the town of Bradley. Do I have any, do we need a motion?
No, you can just ask him. Who votes for her?
Who votes to approve, Ms. Doan? Okay, thank you. Any no votes? Thank you. Next up is the executive committee members for three-year terms. There are three openings and there are three nominated committee members.
Yay.
Shiloh LaFrenney, town manager of the town of Jay. Nathaniel Rudy, the town manager of the town of Gray. Dino Walker, select person, town of Weld. And I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name.
They're not listening.
Do we have any yea, do we have to vote them individually or?
No.
No? Great. So do we have any yea votes to approve all three of those candidates? Any no votes? Line colors.
Yes, I have something quickly for just other business.
Okay.
We had a note sent in from Allison Hurley at Bad Wolf requesting changing of the parking timings in front of the businesses. That's something that we probably want to just have a more broader, it's probably something we need more discussion about. But I did want to just address one, one suggestion she had in our municipal lot, something that I was looking at. When you pull into our lot, we have some signage that makes it seem like it's all for town hall employees. So something I've talked with Jody about, that's pretty low hanging fruit, is just addressing some of the signage, adding in Monday through Thursday, 8 to 6. That way, when town halls closed, folks are, you know, they feel like they can use our parking lot. They still can't park overnight, things like that. There's still other, you know, snow emergencies and things of that nature, but just so, you know, once corner point fills up, they can actually feel like they can use our municipal lot and not park in front of businesses that need more of those short-term uses. So just wanted to share that as it was.
So does Allison want, like, the time reduced? It's like two hour parking, right?
Yeah, she suggested something shorter, I mean, anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes in front of her building.
I mean, I feel like that wouldn't have any problem with it being like 30 minute parking on the street, but that's an exception for another day that we can have.
That we can bring out.
And who would enforce it?
That would be police.
Do we have any input from the police department on that?
We should, it'd be more money, too.
Because they don't really do a whole lot of parking enforcement currently right now, do they?
Their, one of their feedbacks is, you know, they had to ask for, you know, their staff, and they said that, you know, they'd be happy to help. I mean, they obviously would be happy for it, but I think they would be able to enforce more and do more with an extra.
And what about parking on the side of the building here? It'd be less than a full-time person, you know, on the side of the building. Remember, I'd spoken to you about that?
Oh, yeah, that one, I've, we've talked about that. It just, public safety, both, both chiefs are unified and their, their concern is, so if you have passenger side opening up on Rochester Street, because it's more down, it's downhill, people are going pretty fast, their concern, their concern is a child kind of just, you know, opening the door and not really getting out of, getting struck by.
But they could do it here, too, on both sides.
They park right in front of the town hall on the side.
It's, it's also possible to maybe just have a parking on the other side of Rochester Street.
Yeah, but it sounds a lot better than getting another employee to do parking.
The basis of her concerns for more so for people running in and out, right, and not having a parking spot.
Yeah, having spots.
So have we discussed with Jody or even Chief about even just trying to make three or four spots right in front of the businesses while construction's going on, like, just parking for like pickup right there or 20, 20 minute parking, like, just allocate three or four spots there? Is that something that could be potential to do?
I think the, like, if we wanted to discuss doing like two direct. I think the, like, if we wanted to discuss doing like two directly in front of that business, that would accommodate both the future pizza shop and Bad Wolf. That, I think that would be, that wouldn't adversely affect the other businesses.
But that's not, that's only, because you're only, you're only talking about in front of that building, so you also have Mint, who is there, and so you're saying two spaces.
Has Sway or Gavin Duke ever asked about anything?
As, as we've had that discussion with them in the past about the, the little parking lot by the memorial, by the statue and right in front of them, is we've altered those parking times several times in the past few years. It used to be only two hour parking in the little parking lot and I think we eliminated that and, you know, I don't, I don't think there are any more two hour parking signs in the little lot. There hasn't seemed to be a problem with that.
Like Mint, so with Mint, Mint's more of like an hour stay and the gym probably more like an hour stay as well, so they both utilize.
But the other thing, too, is very important, you put these signs up there that say thirty minute parking and then someone's there for an hour because they're running to a different, the gym or a point or something like that, now they're going to be calling the police. I got a parking complaint. You know, that's why I think that you should have their info, too, are they going to be able to monitor that differently?
How many apartments are going in in the middle, in the?
Two hundred and sixty-five over the next, two hundred and sixty-five over the next four years.
Okay, and they're all going to have ample parking with guest parking and?
There'll be three hundred parking spaces in the middle, they're providing three hundred parking spaces and across the street, there'll be a hundred. So you'll see Saturday nights, maybe Thursday nights, Friday nights, you might see, it'll get busy, it'll be, it'll be busy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, parking's going to be a problem going forward.
You need to have some sort of, you know, parking plan.
Any place worth going to has parking problems.
That's right, I agree with you a hundred percent.
But we do need to be proactive, we do need to be. It's going to be, it's going to be.
For the money.
I mean, you've got to remember, all visitors to town hall park there, too. We can't limit them to thirty minutes.
No, and that's why, that's why, that's why I was asking if allocating a couple of spots would be somewhere in the middle.
Right, pay your taxes and pay to do it, too.
Well, the, yeah, that front parking should be for.
That's something we need to keep working on.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to really just report the, I think the, like I said, the low hanging fruit is our municipal lot. Very coincidentally, I was taking a look at the parking signs. The day I took a look at them, someone pulled up to me and asked if they could park there.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we think changing the verbiage on the signs is going to help with flow there, then by all means, I think that's an inexpensive way to try to.
But any other, any other changes, like you guys talked, talked about? It's, it can get complicated. If you, if you time something over here, it can affect over here, so it needs to be looked at comprehensively.
I'd say they need to have a bigger look at it, you know, and you've got to have input from the police department if you're going to ask them to monitor it and write tickets. Well, it's a Tuesday night, so it's trivia night at Corner Point, so they're going to be there a while. And I want to run in and buy sausage at their place, I'm looking for a place to park. So then, I think it's not going to be the people, I think it's going to be, you find the only space you can. When I'm coming here to get to the meeting at six thirty, I, there's nothing on a Tuesday night, because I know they have an event going on, so I'm always in that.
I'm always in that.
So I, I had no, I agree with you, I think that most people are going to try to be respectful, but I also think then the businesses, if they see the signs, they're going to expect that, oh, I know that car's been sitting there for forty-nine minutes, I'm going to call the police. I just think, I think that we need to look at it and we need to bring everybody to the table and say, what's going to work and what isn't? And get everybody's feedback before we go putting up thirty minute signs. I understand her concern because, yeah, if you have a business, you want people to come in and out, but.
Solving a problem here can definitely cause problems in other.
Exactly, there's, there's a connection, there's a ricochet effect.
I think putting some more thought into it and then actually bringing in the businesses to have a conversation with everybody, that's.
Sounds like a workshop, Dave.
I was just going to say, it sounds like maybe we should put a workshop together. And I'm sure that Noah will be happy to get that organized on his return. Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Have any other non-agenda items?
I make the motion to adjourn second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed?